Good evening and welcome to this Tuesday, October 2, 2018, meeting of the Raymore Planning and Zoning Commission. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let me remind commissioners, please make sure your microphone is lighted and speak into the mic for the record. And we'll call roll. Commissioner Wiggins.
Present.
Commissioner Armstrong.
Present.
Commissioner Bowie.
Here.
Commissioner Crane.
Present.
Commissioner Pfizer.
Present.
Commissioner Mieske.
Present.
Commissioner Urquia.
Present.
Mayor Turnbow.
Present.
And Commissioner Faulkner is present. We have a quorum and actually have the full commission here this evening, which is great. No personal appearances scheduled this evening. One item on the consent agenda, approval of minutes from our September 4, 2018 meeting. And unless there are any concerns about the minutes, I entertain a motion either to accept the consent agenda or to approve minutes from the September 4 meeting.
I move that we approve the minutes from the September 4 meeting, the consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Wiggins, second by Commissioner Pfizer, to approve minutes
of the September 4, 2018 meeting and accept consent agenda. Accept consent agenda. Sound good? All those in favor, raise a hand, please. One, two, three, four, five, six in favor. Any opposed and abstentions? Okay. So Commissioners Armstrong, Bowie, and Mieske abstaining. Six in favor, none opposed, three abstentions. Thank you. All right. Moving along, nothing in unfinished business this evening. We're starting off with an agenda showing four cases under new business. And Mr. Zur, I'm not sure, did we include Mr. Zur in this conversation or are we hitting him cold?
Yeah, I'm happy to discuss. Under item number C, you do have a final plat being approved on the same night as a preliminary plat. There are provisions within the code that we would need to address. Therefore, counsel, the attorney for the city would request this evening that when you come to item number C under new business, the matter for final plat simply be continued to the next published available Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, thereby allowing staff to comply with all the requirements established by code for approval of the same.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Zur. And the chapter, just for the record, I think is Unified Development Code 470.010.C.4, page 470-3 concerning multiple applications. And basically requires that final plat be staggered and not heard at the same meeting as preliminary plat. So I apologize, hope that's not causing you too much concern, but we did actually enact UDC for a reason, and that was to allow time for consideration and not try to rush everything. So we will do that. First case then, under new business, case 18018, reclassification of zoning, 3.6 acres located immediately north of Eagle Glen School on the west side of Fox Ridge Drive, from R3A multifamily residential to R3B apartment community residential. The case will require a public hearing. And before we open the floor for the public hearing, would the applicant...
This isn't my first rodeo.
Apparently not. We must not do business too differently than everywhere else. So if you would, introduce yourself and present your case. Thank you.
Absolutely. My name's Cassie, C-A-S-S-I-E, Paben, P as in Paul, A-B as in Bowie, E-N as in Nancy. Address is 10340 North 84th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68122. I'm going to go ahead and cover a presentation that would go through all the cases that are on the agenda tonight, just because I think if we start to break it up, it might raise more questions, and if we can have a larger discussion, that tends to go through. We're here tonight, we are presenting the lots at Fox Ridge. And there should be, I've been told on the screens in front of you, so I'm confirming, yes, okay. On the screens in front of you, go through a presentation, it's also up there for anybody else that doesn't have a screen in front of them. We were presented this project, oh, around the end of last year, beginning of this year, through a mutual friend that was also familiar with the previous developer that had been working on a project there. We have some mutual interest and some various funds that we do business with. We got introduced, started taking a look at it, and here we are today. But a little bit about ourselves, we're made up, our team that's working on this project is made up really of three entities. Tetrad Property Group, which is the company that I represent, we're a full-service development company based out of Omaha. We also have offices in Lincoln, Nebraska, and Fort Collins, Colorado. We specialize in development all across, really, the central United States, although I did have one outlier, I'm not sure if you call New Mexico central United States, but it's north-south-central, so we'll include it for now. But we primarily do commercial development, anything from office buildings, industrial development, mixed-use facilities, as well as residential. We really tend to specialize in public-private partnerships, so a lot of the work we do is with municipalities and colleges and universities or other government agencies or quasi-government agencies that need facilities for them. We've been in existence since 2011. Our two principals are W. David Scott, who's the president and CEO of Tetrad Corporation, and Zach Wiegert, who's the principal and head of Goldenrod, which is an investment fund. And together, they have formed Tetrad Property Group. Since 2011, we have done approximately $1.2 billion worth of development throughout the United States. And we're excited to have this project come online as part of our portfolio and keep on moving along and hopefully, and I'm looking at these guys, and I know Matt Tapp's behind me, too, hopefully find some other projects in this market to continue to work on. So we're excited to be here. The other two components of our team are Olson Associates, they're our engineer for the project. We utilize Olson Associates on almost every single project that we do, so we're very familiar with the work they do. I know that they've done quite a bit of work in this community as well. And then Holland Basham Architects, based out of Omaha, they do quite a bit of different work for us, depending on the various clients and various regions that we go. But as Kurt, our lead architect for Holland Basham, had mentioned at our Good Neighbor meeting, they've done over 7,000 residential units, apartment units, all for a while. I mean, they've been around for about 20 to 30 years. So that's a pretty decent number for the size of firm that they are. But we're excited to be here and keep this project moving forward, as I know has come before the city several different times throughout the history. And we're looking forward to starting to move dirt and get this process officially done. The next slide here is really just an outline of where the site's at, just north of Eagle Glen Elementary, and then south of a potential commercial development site that I know the city's been working on trying to attract additional investors to. We're hopeful that with our development coming in, that the city will be successful in being able to attract those types of developers to do that type of project on that lot. So those two, we see a lot of similarities there and a lot of hand-in-hand partnerships that we think we can make and help each other out in that respect. The next slide that we're going to go to is really our site layout. If you start looking at this, there's really a total of 12 buildings on the site layout. 11 of those are the apartment buildings, with the 12th building being the clubhouse for the entire complex. There are two different, really, building styles that make up this sort of, this plan. And we went that route primarily due to the slope and grading of the site. And as we started to counterbalance what makes the most sense on the site, what we can handle, what the market demands are, and really being able to work with it, we've found using, on the back, the west edge, the large building that you see that runs north-south, that essentially acts as a retaining wall, has a garage built underneath it, so there's covered parking underneath, and then you'll have stick-built residential units on top of it. And then the others are more of the garden style, so they're starting flat on the ground. There's not, you know, a basement or parking underneath those, and then go up. And the thought, as we do those, is to work with the grade as you're going from the west side of the site to the east side of the site. Throughout there, too, I know one of the big questions that came up at the Good Neighbor meeting was the tree canopy that lines the east side of the site. It is our intent to leave the overwhelming majority of that canopy there for a number of reasons. Tree removal, if you don't have to do it, don't do it, first and foremost. Second, it acts as a really good landscape buffer to any other neighbors that might be in there that might have concerns. It also can help, if there's traffic along there, mitigate any noise back and forth between the two properties. So we do plan to leave most of that. You'll see other spots for detention, kind of in that southeast corner, as there's water that really runs more towards that direction. And then other, you know, parking, the other amenities pool, kind of a grand, if you look in the middle, there's kind of a grand lawn, if you will, that is really going to be a highlight of the amenities that we end up offering as part of this project. I'm going to walk through kind of an overview of this site. We have a 3D model that if we had the software available, you could actually do kind of a fly-through, but we were able to capture those screenshots, if you will, and we're able to put them into a presentation. So this first image here would be if you're looking from the east back to the west within the project, obviously a little bit more elevated because you're not seeing all the trees right up front, it's not street level. So when you first pull into the property, you're greeted with the main clubhouse area that will have, again, the additional amenities that we're proposing for this project. And then as you start going through, you start to see a little bit more of the elevation as it relates to the buildings and the building context. This particular slide would be back over kind of on that far northwest corner. And then this is looking from west to east, so if you're in that main building that's in the back west side of the property, looking down through that main lawn, and then again of the clubhouse. As we started going through, it was one of the, we had a lot of deciding factors. We knew we wanted to make this a Class A luxury apartment project. The apartments are market rate. There were some questions that came up at the Good Neighborhood meeting regarding what rents look like. We do have those established. It's not an affordable housing project. This is a very true market-driven housing project that will offer five different unit types, so anywhere from a studio, two different one-bedrooms, one that is a pure one-bedroom apartment, one that also has a den attached to it, so it could be used as an office or an extra space, a two-bedroom apartment, and then a three-bedroom apartment. So we have multiple different ranges that we think, based on the research and data we've collected within the region, makes the most sense and currently has the most demand for. Some of the other considerations that we had when we started looking at this were also the architectural style. We knew we wanted something that stood out but still fit the character of the neighborhood and of the community. So as we go through and start refining and final design over the next month, we'll start to see a lot more of those in terms of final design come forward. But you're seeing, you're seeing the bricks, you're seeing masonry, you're seeing some different paneling, not the vinyl siding paneling, but different paneling mechanisms that also help make buildings more energy efficient, that we're starting to incorporate. And then one of the other things that came up was the flat roof. And if you start looking at different Class A luxury apartment projects, particularly within this market, you do see some of the flat roofs that go along with those. And we made that very conscious decision, and some people don't always recognize it, but doing a flat roof on these types of projects actually costs more than it does to do the traditional pitch roof. And so we're willing to invest at additional costs within this project because we think it's worth it. And we think that the market also can absorb that type of product really pretty much instantly. So other things that we're looking at right now in terms of amenities, obviously, as you saw on the site plan and as we did the tour through the project, there will be a pool deck area. It's not meant to just be a pool, standalone pool, and that's it. It's really meant to be kind of an outdoor oasis, for lack of better terms, for the residents that choose to live there. They'll have additional amenities within there, so it might be the built-in lounge chairs that go into the pool, a zero-entry pool, spa, barbecue, gathering facilities for any outdoor events. Inside, we're looking at different movie theater-type options or smaller gathering spaces, where if you wanted to get together or host, you know, a larger function with a larger group of friends, you could utilize that space, whether it's to watch a football game or a baseball game, you could do that within there. We're also contemplating a concierge service as part of the apartment complex, excuse me. And that would really allow anybody that lives there, whether it's dropping off, you know, dry cleaning or packages or whatever that looks like, that's another amenity. And then probably the biggest one that we've been looking at in terms of amenities, because we're seeing it in a lot of other markets, I think we're seeing it in some of the data and research that we've seen here, too, are pet-friendly facilities. So we're looking at dog runs, we're looking at specific areas for them, we're even considering a dog wash station or a pet wash station built in as part of the project. I actually did another project recently that it was a full-blown pet wash and grooming station, and then next door to it, and something we'd have to think about here, would also be a bike repair station. So as we start to really refine that, we're taking a look. We've also been looking at a lot of the different studies that have been done, based on the pure drivers for us in doing the project, with the employment of some of the larger employers and employment projections, the types of employees they're bringing in, and what are the amenities that they're looking for. So we've been doing a ton of research, whether it's with the Chamber Economic Development Groups, too, on anything that they've come forward with in terms of studies. So I think that's it for everything. I'm sure there's questions, and I'm happy to answer anything else you might have.
Any questions now, or shall we do our usual and let her sit down and then run you back and forth? Questions for now? Thank you.
You bet.
Oh, sorry. Commissioner Mieske?
I noticed one of the issues that came up at the meeting was there's only one entrance and one exit. And something about when the city or somebody develops that property, then there'd be another one?
Yeah, so that did come up. And as we had been working through the site plan, and I'll go back to the site plan, and hopefully you can see it on your screens without the glare, and I might need David to point out to me. So there is currently, as proposed, the one entrance and exit that you see onto Fox Ridge Drive right there. However, we do have a second entrance contemplated and willing to give whatever necessary right-of-way that we need to on the north side, because eventually we know that that north road will have to be installed. So we are contemplating that, and that would be our additional entrance. It's also our hope that as we start moving through the construction, we'll also have, hopefully, an identified development to the north. So timing-wise, how we base buildings and as we work through our construction process, those line up perfectly.
Is there going to be some kind of traffic study done based on the...
So the traffic study, that was, that also came up at the neighborhood meeting. We were not subjected to a traffic study by city staff, however, Jim or David, if you want to talk about the traffic study and some of those requirements, I'll defer that to them. But that was not a requirement on our part. I would tell you, in my past experience, generally, these types of projects, while they do produce some traffic, when you have more of a true commercial development that's expected to the north, that's generally what would trigger a traffic study. But I'll defer to city staff on that answer.
Okay. Next question? Can I keep going?
Go ahead.
We're on a roll.
Okay, okay. Here we go. You're going to have quite a bit of green space in here, and I know you mentioned something about, you know, dog park and stuff like that. Shelters, is that the game plan for, like, cookouts or family gatherings?
Yeah, that's part of the amenity package that we would include in that green space.
Okay, okay. Is there anything in the, as long as I'm on the roll...
Yeah, keep going.
Is there anything in the, I guess, Eagle Glen Home Association that you would have to be a part of, or...
To my knowledge, no. However, if there were a neighborhood association that covers that area, that's something that we would fully be a part of.
Eagle Glen House Association?
It does.
I'm pretty sure they did.
Yeah, I mean, we would, that's certainly something that any neighborhood association, that type of thing, we would certainly be a part of.
I think, Mr. Zur, I suspect we don't know for sure, but I'd suspect that the Eagle Glen Homes Association did not include this plat.
I would be shocked if it was.
Yeah, that's, so we don't know for sure, but we'd really be shocked if you were included in that Homes Association.
Yeah, I would just say it's, yeah, I would just tell you from our company's standpoint, when we do a project, whether it's residential or commercial, obviously, if it's residential and it's within an area that has a defined homeowners association, it's a little bit different, where this is, you know, really a rental rate, but that's something that we would actively participate in. We're active in a lot of the different neighborhood or area associations within other communities that we do projects in.
So, well, thank you very much. That's all I had.
Okay. Commissioner Bowie?
Just a couple of questions, kind of, some of those are in the same vein. Tell me a little bit about the decision to go with the flat roofs. If you know about the area, you have homes to the east, homes to the west, homes to the south, and they all have a certain style, very similar. Dropping flat roofs in this particular area right here seems to really create sort of a different look for the area. What was the decision around that?
So again, there were a couple of things. One of them was for the type of apartment project that we're going for. We're striving for a Class A luxury apartment complex. If you do a study and analysis of Class A luxury apartments, whether it's in the K-C Metro area, Omaha, Oklahoma City, Des Moines, Denver, you're going to find that in those areas, if you're looking at a true Class A luxury apartment project, 99.9% of the time, they're going to have flat roofs. We also recognize that there is an additional expense to do that, based on how that's constructed, and we were willing to make that investment. That said, part of the reason that we did that is while we're trying to blend in with the community and with the neighborhoods around us, with some of the different elements that we're going to be putting on the outside of the buildings, we still want to be different. At the end of the day, we're still attracting residents to our project, and this is one differentiator. If you went and put a pitch roof on every single building, then what really makes it any different than any other apartment project, whether it's kitty-corner up the street or down the street, or, you know, anywhere else in the area? So that, it was really more of a differentiating factor of what makes us different while still trying to fit the context of the neighborhood.
Okay.
And truthfully, we felt that we could do more of the context of the neighborhood with the building facade than the roof. So that was our gift point on that.
Okay. And then I think I read here roughly about 400 units. 400 units, and I'm just playing the math game here, 400 units, if they were 90% or 10% vacancy rate, that might be 360 of them might be occupied at any given time, with two to three residents per, we're looking at 600, 700, 800 people, new people in the area, which means new people driving down 58 Highway or Lucy Webb. Going back to his question about traffic study, it just, it seems like it would drop quite a few people in that area that's already inundated with a lot of single-family homes. And you guys, when you looked at this particular development, did that come into play at all in terms of what happened, in terms of the traffic on 58, which is already pretty thick?
I would tell you the traffic on 58, other than the fact that there's a lot of people that go up and down it, and so somebody that might be traveling that every day, whether they're going to or from work or wherever, that might be looking for a place to live for us, we see that as an attractor of having the highway as close as it is. Again, the traffic study was not something that was required of us, therefore, we didn't go into it. My history would tell you that, well, again, I don't disagree with any of the math, and I fully recognize it, until you start to get, I mean, it's more of a, this isn't where you're going to be attracting, it's not like a mall or a big shopping center where it's not just the people that are living there that are going there, it's just, it's the different context, and when you start looking at traffic patterns. But 58, truthfully, didn't, did not worry us one bit about it. In fact, we see it as a, as an attribute to the project.
Am I still going?
Sure.
Sorry. One more thing.
You've got the floor until somebody else.
Works, we're on a roll, let's keep going.
So hopefully others will address some other things, and I don't have to go through a list of things. But, okay, what about sidewalk? Are we at that point yet where I can ask that question?
Yeah, so...
So when you, I'm looking at the kids that come out of Eagle Glen Elementary on a regular basis. Typically, if, typically, they usually have to cross pretty much one street, right? They cross over to the other side of Fox Ridge, and they might walk up to the other complex apartments. But if I'm, if I'm reading this right, they will have, if they live in the apartments, there's not, there's nothing connecting Eagle Glen to the apartments that you're planning. They'd have to walk across the street to the east side of Fox Ridge, and then walk down, and then walk back over?
No, that's not correct. So it's not shown on the site plan that's on your screen right now, that actually came back in our staff comments. There will be a sidewalk that will run along the east side of our property, the entire length of our property, to allow that connection, or on our side, on the east side of our property. So on the west side of Fox Ridge, but the east side of our property, there will be a sidewalk that basically would mirror like what you see on the east side of Fox Ridge right now, the entire length of our property. That was, that was a requirement from city staff to put that sidewalk in.
Okay, okay. That was...
Yeah, so there'll be a sidewalk there. That came up, too, at the Good Neighbor meeting. Someone asked about the school doing the sidewalk. I can't dictate what another property owner does to their property. I would hope that they would see the benefit of adding something along that as well, and I think city staff would tell you that it's always been contemplated to have a sidewalk that runs the entire length of Fox Ridge on the west side as well.
Okay.
You good? Commissioner Wiggins?
Just to kind of touch on that end piece, and maybe this is more of a city staff. So you guys would run to the end of your property line, but then there's, let's say, 100 more feet to go to connect to the school. Would that be up to the city or potentially the school district to put in that? But that would be, I mean, they wouldn't just dead-end, and then all of a sudden, we'd have 100 feet of grass until we got to the school. Is that essentially in the plan?
You're absolutely correct. The requirement was there for the school when they were initially built, but when they constructed the school, it would have been a sidewalk to nowhere, because this current property is vacant and all the way to the north. And so we're currently revisiting with the school district, trying to resurrect that requirement and figure out either what that partnership will look like or who will ultimately be responsible. But that connection will be made in the future.
Thanks. That was kind of my understanding, but just for everybody else, I kind of wanted to ask that question. Okay, so I have a couple of quick questions.
Perfect.
Hopefully, these are mostly geared towards you and not city staff. So Class A apartments, we keep throwing that phrase around. Yeah, I know, obviously, I assume that's, you know, it's a fixtures thing, obviously the physical appearance outside, the appearance inside, you know, higher-end appliances, granite or some sort of fine stone.
Correct.
Does that also come with, like, a, do you guys have a stricter credit or background check that you guys do than somebody else would do? And so therefore, would that potentially limit us? Or on the reverse side, is that also seen as a benefit? Or on the reverse side, is that also seen as a benefit, because you're bringing in a certain clientele?
So this, our project, and based on the rents that we're gonna command from it, just because of what the investment we're making, it will require someone that can afford to pay a higher amount of rent. A studio apartment, we are contemplating starting out at $800 for a studio apartment.
Okay.
And the market commands it, ironically enough. You know, as someone that lived in apartments, you know, in college and in grad school, I kind of choke at that, but if the market commands it, you do it, right?
But is that, is that considered luxury? I mean, because you said the word luxury. $800 studio is considered luxury?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I mean, downtown first lot, you're paying 11, 1200 bucks for a studio?
Yeah, so, I mean, that's kind of, that is the starting point of there. So obviously, we will command a higher, we will command a clientele, if you will, for lack of a better term, or a resident that can.
Afford it.
That can afford it, that makes the income to afford it. And of course, I mean, we do the background checks, we do the credit checks, we do all those, like, a lot of complexes now.
I just didn't know if they're, having lived in apartments, you know, you've got, I just didn't know if those are, if that's different, obviously I've been in apartment management, so I don't know from one unit to another.
Yeah, you know, I would tell you, you know, every company has their little variations on what that looks like, you know, some will require a credit score of X, or you have to have one or two additional signees basically guarantee the lease. You know, those are types of things that, again, that's kind of inside the house as you manage a property, but those are definitely things that we take into consideration.
And to kind of go off of that, you know, I think of Commissioner Bowie, he was saying, you know, 400 some odd units, 600 some odd vehicles, so that obviously assumes one and a half people per unit. Is there kind of, I guess, a restriction on occupancy? So if it's a studio, or is either the city or the company, do they limit, okay, it's a studio, you can have two people? I just, are we not gonna end up with a three-bedroom apartment with six kids, you know, just got out of college, or living in a three-bedroom, people and having a?
You could.
Well, that's why, like, that's why, that's why I brought up the question is.
I mean, we would ultimately be beholden to whatever city code states. So if city code states that you can't have any more than, what is it, four traditionally in most places, some places five, four to five people that are not related, living in the same residence, then we would ultimately be beholden to that. We do have some projects that function a little bit differently, that we have some different restrictions on, and a little flexibility is just, again, depending on the project type.
Sure.
But really, any of the true multifamily that we have done, we are always beholden to whatever that city code says.
Okay.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry, just a couple more. The parking garage, just curious from your guys' experience, so building, is that building four, it's kind of grainy in here?
Uh, yeah.
The far west, so that's the only garage space?
That's the only, as we're showing it on the site plan, true garage space underneath any of the buildings. Again, there would be, for those that chose to utilize that, there is an additional charge for the underground parking, or covered parking. One of the other things we are currently evaluating, based on the initial site layout, and as we start to finalize some of this stuff for our grading packages and construction timing, is the addition of canopies in the surface lots, or even the potential of, are there some of those surface spaces that maybe we could even do what I would say are slab-on-grade stick-built garages?
Okay, that was.
So we are currently evaluating that based on how our site plan currently fits, and what makes the most sense between the true, just blanket surface lot, or can we add some additional parking options? I mean, we recognize, we live, we live in an all-weather climate, Raymore's in an all-weather climate, and being able to offer that really is a huge, huge help.
Okay, because that was my concern, was that, and obviously that's not really my place by any means, but when I think of a lot of the apartment complexes, what I would call the freestanding garages, anybody that I've ever talked to, there's many months waiting list for those, because even at $75 or $100 extra a month.
People pay it.
People pay it, it's storage space, so I just didn't know if that was in the plan or whatnot. And then, I guess this maybe is more of a city thing, but I saw lots of balconies in the renderings, would those be metal and concrete, and would they, does the city have regulations as far as balcony barbecues, or does, with the apartment complex, just thinking of, you know, risk and things associated with that, which maybe is not necessarily here, but, you know, it's a nice lifestyle thing, but it's also a risk-based.
Right, so the balconies would fit in with the materials that we're using on the structures, so they would be of the metal and the concrete, they wouldn't be your traditional, in some projects, like you see, that are the two-by-fours, cut to various sizes and built out to maintain a deck. In terms of any barbecues, we would obviously make sure that we were in compliance with whatever city code specifically states. I do know in one of our projects, we don't allow them, just as a fire, it's a fire thing.
Understood, thank you very much.
Okay. Commissioner Bowie, I'll come back to you in a minute, I want to make sure, does anybody else have a question while we're in the, in this phase? Okay. Commissioner Armstrong?
Just a couple.
Yeah.
The price point of 800 for a studio, as a landlord in the Kansas City area, that seems a little bit above what I would expect. I can certainly see downtown commanding that, but I see that also as a different tenant, and I'm sure you've done due diligence. Are there examples of rentals in our area that are commanding that price point?
Yes, so that, I would say the nearest thing that I would call as close to what we're gonna be building here would be residences at New Longview, would be the closest thing to what we're gonna build. Other ones in the market would be residences on Quavera, City View, if you start looking at some of those types of things, those are, that's more the price point that we're gonna be pushing, and actually a little bit above that. But yes, to answer your initial question, we have done months of due diligence on this. Like I said, we first got introduced on this in the last year, beginning of this year, and, oh gosh, I think the first meeting we really, not first meeting, but really face-to-face we had with the city was maybe late April, early May, so we spent a solid, solid couple of months really digging in. I have a lot of other contacts within the market as well, that I was able to get some information on and start running all of our analysis on. But we believe, based on the employment figures that we're seeing, the projections we're seeing, and the information that we've been able to get, that that price point can be met.
Commissioner Bowie, do you want to come back? One more.
Quick.
I'm counting.
Sorry. Okay, so you mentioned, and I saw in the literature here, the information about New Longview, I think thereby, over by Longview Community College, is that kind of where I'm looking?
Correct, yeah.
And you might have mentioned this when you first stood up, are there examples here in Kansas City of where your firm, or the firm proposed is gonna, to manage? Are there other area, other examples here in Kansas City?
So we have not done any actual single, multifamily residence like this type of product. We've actually done a couple of different senior living facilities on the Kansas side. We no longer, we built it, we owned it for a few years, and then we just most recently sold them, just because we, we do that with some of our products, and this was, that was more of a specialty one that we just, we just don't do, and this is something we do, but that's, that was our initial introduction into the K.C. market on that site, if you want to talk residences.
Yeah, okay, so.
But the other ones, I mean, we talked about, if you look at, you know, New Longview, if you look at Quavera, if you look at Prairie Fire, if you look at City View, those are really ones that was kind of the baseline model for where we were going.
Okay, I was just trying to also understand the management structure, who's gonna manage that as you go?
Yeah.
We're getting into an area where we don't necessarily need to go at this point, but, and we don't, we don't have to go there yet, but I'm just curious about that for long-term.
Yeah, no, it's okay, it came up at the neighborhood meeting as well. So traditionally, we self-manage our properties, depending on what it is. This is one that we're currently, as we go through final design and layout and everything, we're having that internal debate of, do we hire a staff full-time that lives in Raymore and has someone on-site 24/7, 365, or do we work with another trusted provider to provide that management? And that's just a thing that we're going through. I would tell you the residents that we do currently, the multifamily products that we currently do have, we do self-manage those.
If there aren't any more questions at this time, I'd like to move on to staff report. Mr. Catterett, Mr. Grass, we'll give you a break, thank you.
I will do the staff report on this case. Cassie did a great job of the overview of the entire project, a lot of great questions. I'll try to incorporate some of the questions in the staff report response for this application. A couple of your questions would deal more perhaps with the site plan applications, so I'll, we'll wait to answer those at that time. But the request, the first request before you is the reclassification of zoning. This would be of the southern 3.6 acres of the property, so there's a strip of land that's immediately adjacent to the Eagle Glen School sites, that was established back in 2011, and the zoning of that strip of land is currently the R3A, which is our multifamily classification. The request before you this evening is to reclassify the zoning of that 3.6 acres to match the larger 20-plus acres to the north, which has the R3B zoning classification, which is our apartment-community district. Included some site photographs, most of you should be familiar with the site, just showing the general layout of the site. There currently is a couple of small drainage channels that go through the property, one of them almost borders along Fox Ridge Drive, and so a couple of photographs show, show that crossing through the property. As you saw on the site plan, they intend to keep those stream channels in this current, in their current condition. The property itself has a classification on our future land use map as being appropriate for medium and high-density residential. Those classifications were established back in, actually, 1999, when the initial zoning of this property and land use for this property was set up. The initial plan for the overall acreage had two-family along Fox Haven subdivision. 2011, that was shifted to the south along the Eagle Glen School, and again, the request is tonight, if approved, would eliminate the two-family and have multifamily apartments over the entire property. We note that Fox Ridge Drive is listed as a major collector. One of the questions that came up dealt with the traffic study, and specifically was not required for this project, because the traffic study was completed when Eagle Glen subdivision was proposed. So prior to any construction of any homes, they had to do a major traffic study to anticipate all the land uses of the property, and that included this property being multifamily development at a higher density than what they're proposing. So the traffic study anticipated more traffic than what this project's even, even proposing, so that, we consider that a plus, as well as the traffic study incorporated all the commercial land that still has not been built. That is why we don't require the study, because it's already been analyzed, Fox Ridge Drive has four lanes in that area for a reason, the same as 58 Highway. It can handle any traffic that would be generated by this project. Being a reclassification of zoning, it does require a public hearing, which was advertised for this evening. I do want to enter into the record the notices that we mailed to the adjoining property owners, those publication we had in the Journal, our Unified Development Code, the application that was submitted, our growth management plan, the staff report submitted to you this evening, as well as the conceptual site plan that was submitted as part of the overall project. Our staff report does incorporate the requirements for the change of zoning, that's before you this evening. Do want to note a couple of the previous acts, I already identified, the concurrent configuration of parcel five was created in 2011, and that's when that zoning of the R3A was established, and the R3B classification of zoning for the north part of the property, again, established in 2011. The resulting request did require a Good Neighbor Meeting. We sent out a lot of notices for this particular Good Neighbor Meeting. We had 11 residents attend, and we broke out in the report all the different questions that were answered. It was a very good discussion, a lot of good questions from the, from the residents, that hopefully the responses here in the staff report reflect the responses either city staff and certainly the applicant had at that meeting. I want to note the current zoning of this 3.6 acres, the R3A, it allows a mixture of multifamily. It allows the, it would allow two-family units, it would allow townhome units, it would allow multifamily buildings, they can be individually owned, or they could be owned by one entity. In the R3B zoning classification, it's one lot, one owner for, for the complex, so we have unified ownership under the R3B zoning classification. We've identified the 400 units that are being proposed. That was actually a, an agreement that the current property owner, Great Plains Developments, who did the Eagle Glen subdivision, they agreed to that previously, when we were having discussions on the stream buffer setback requirement, if you would recall that. They agreed to limit the overall density of parcel five and seven combined to 400 units, and that's why we have that restriction on the property. And that's a reduction of 142 units over what would have been allowed under the zoning. From a city staff standpoint and a community standpoint, thought that was a good agreement. The development standards, how the property is developed, are the same under R3A and R3B regarding the setbacks and the overall development standards for the property. I do want to note, type A screening is required when you have the R3B zoning, so the reclassification of this property triggers the requirement of the type A screening along the southern property line, as well as is, will be required along the western property line with Fox Haven subdivision. As the applicant indicated, there's a great tree line along the west property line, very limited current tree line along the southern property lines. So some extensive work will need to be done to buffer the apartment community from the school. That's reflected in the site plan, and we'll give you those details at that time, but simply noting that that is a requirement that they will, will be complying with. The staff has submitted proposed findings of fact in the staff report for your consideration. I do want to note the staff does recommend that the commission accept these proposed findings of fact, and for this case, 18018, the loss of Fox Ridge rezoning from R3A to R3B for parcel five of Eagle Glen, with the recommendation of approval. We did include the memo from the Engineering Division, Department of Public Works, on the provision of adequate public facilities. Already briefly spoke about the traffic study requirements, there's other public facilities that are impacted by the development. Of course, water system's already in place, extension of the sanitary sewer will need to occur to provide sewer service to this property. The details about the stormwater and water quality will come out with the site plan, but when that agreement was placed on the limitation of the units, they also agreed to do some improvements, off-site improvements regarding stormwater quality. So one of the major drainage channels coming off 58 Highway that crosses through the commercial land crosses through what would be the northeast quarter of the site, again, reflected in the site plan. That drainage channel basically will be untouched, continue to allow the water to flow through the property. On the southeast quarter of the site, they intend to do a stormwater detention basin that will collect all of the stormwater from the developed part of the site. So 100% of the developed part of the site goes into that stormwater detention pond, and then gets released into what would be the side ditch along Fox Ridge Drive, which is where they plan to make some of these off-site improvements. Mr. Rocos could certainly give you a lot more detail about that, I know he's reviewed the application in detail again when we get to site plan, probably get a little bit more specific at that time. I think for, at least for the reclassification of zoning, I'll limit the answers to the questions that the commission had to that. A lot of them, again, apply to the staff report, that will be done as part of the site plan. So I think that'll conclude staff report this time.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Catterett, and I think before we get into any further discussion, I'll open the public hearing. And I think before we get into any further discussion, I'll open the public hearing. And before I open the public hearing, I will ask if anyone from the public wishes to speak on this case, case 18018, reclassification of zoning, please come forward to the podium, give us your name and address for the record, and we'd ask that you limit your comments to no more than five minutes. You're my timekeeper this evening. So I will open the public hearing on case 18018, reclassification of zoning for 3.6 acres located immediately north of Eagle Glen School. Would anyone like to speak on this case?
Yes, hello. My name is William Cooper. I live at 117 South Pelham Path in Maymore, Missouri. I know there's quite a few folks in this, in the neighborhood that already rent and are tenants to property owners. And my concern of building an apartment complex is for the owners of those properties, those houses, because I rent the house from my mom and dad. They're concerned about losing money on that house. And I'm not this, not totally, not totally unfavorable towards an apartment complex. I just kind of feel $800 is a little high for this area to demand that kind of rent just for a studio apartment. And I do like that you mentioned the tree line to the west. I would kind of like to see maybe a, maybe like a privacy fence on the south side of the property that's adjacent to Eagle Glen Elementary School. And I somewhat also worry about the proposed commercial development on the north side of the property, and I guess egress out into the shops that might be developed and, and traffic there. But that, that's pretty much my, my points. Thank you.
Would anyone else from the public like to speak? And seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on case 18018, and open the floor for questions commissioners may have of staff or the applicant. Commissioner Armstrong.
Thank you. Mr. Catterett, if you can clarify, my knowledge that a screening that is mandated by city code on the south side, is that penetrable? Could, can there be foot traffic between the school and the, the complex then? Or is it, as Mr. Cooper suggested, a privacy-type fence?
Certainly. The, what I referenced, the type A screening, our code actually allows the applicant, the property owner, different options on how they comply with a type A screening. The type A screening is really more intended to be an opaque screen, so, so the visibility is blocked, not so much the ability to cross through it. A fence is not a specific requirement. It is an option. You could, you could do a six-foot privacy fence. You could do a berm of, of six feet in height. You could do a mixture of a berm with plantings on the berm, or you could simply do a row of evergreen trees. There's a multitude of different options that are available, but it does have to provide a, an opaque screen along that property line. The intent, we know we're not going to screen, you know, three-story buildings. That's not the intent. The intent is more of, of getting the, the low level, the foot traffic, vehicle lights, things of that nature screened. I believe, and again, it'll show up with the site plan, I believe currently there is a, the proposal would be a berm with plantings on the berm. I don't believe a fence is a current proposal, nor can we specifically require that, because, again, with our type A, there are the options that we, that we offer.
Mr. Catterett?
May I?
You may. We have help.
Cassie Paven, 10340 North 84th Street, Omaha, Nebraska. It is our plan along the south side of the property adjacent to the school to do a mixture of a berm and then additional planting. So the berm right now, we're looking at about maybe a three-to-four height berm, then with a variety of different plantings, whether it's trees, whether it's various native grasses, different plantings along there to help provide that entire screening along that south side. That was also one of the requirements as we started working through the project and the feedback that we got from the school district, is they wanted to see something nice there, not just like a, a wall, if you will.
So essentially, you would be able to see through from the school to the complex with what you've described?
Potentially. I mean, again, depends on the, the maturity of any of the trees that we, we do through there. Is certain trees go through, obviously, if they lose leaves or whatever, clearly you might be able to see through, but the landscaping that we're proposing there will meet the requirements set forth by the city.
So, I don't know if you have your code book. Page 430-5 is an example of type A and actually shows small trees on 30-inch centers, large, or 30-foot, sorry, with evergreens below, large trees on 40-foot center. And these are examples, Mr. Catterett, Mr. Grass. Or tall evergreen trees staggered, and of course, seasonal, you know, the, some of those screens are going to be quite a bit more opaque in the summer than they will in the winter.
Right.
But again, I suspect the impact of people being outside and, and really wanting that screen probably are more important in the summer months as well. And I see Commissioner Wiggins has, is that actually one of these landscape maps, too?
Yeah, it's page 70 on our PDF. It's got the type A screening of 150 some odd trees, probably.
Yeah, a lot of trees.
And during the summer, when those tree, or, you know, when the trees are thicker, wintertime is when schools really usually in, and so that'll be when it's probably easier to see through. So I don't know if that's a consideration or concern as far as the opaqueness, considering that'll be the, the higher, you know, the, the time of year when the school is more in use, as well as lights, because it's darker earlier and later, or darker earlier and darker later.
Yeah, so part of the evaluation, as we've talked a lot about the south edge and the screening, and really the landscaping of it, goes back to, if you go onsite today, if you go down to the middle of the site, there's a ton of trees there, too. And so as we start working through that package, we are also doing an evaluation of, are there any trees within the middle of the site that we can salvage and replant? You know, and, and does that make sense? Does it work? Does it still meet with what we need to? And what opportunities do those also provide for us as well? So that's an additional evaluation that we're doing as we start to prepare for our site grading.
Mr. Zer.
Just real quickly, and, and I don't want to detract from the good conversation the commission is providing here, I want to make sure and impress that you are currently working, and we've got some spillover here. Obviously, all of the cases on the docket this evening are going to be related to this particular property and the development. You're currently considering the application with regard to the rezoning application. Many of the questions that the commission members are having are stemming from the good neighbor information that's included within the staff report. I just want to make sure and impress upon the commission this evening, with regard to this case, you should be looking at your staff proposed findings of fact and your item numbers one through 11 with regard to whether or not this is an appropriate rezoning application, moving the bottom three acres to become the same rezoning, the same zoning classification as the north 20 acres. So I don't want to curtail discussion. I did want to make sure and point out that a lot of this will spill over into the other cases as well, too, and I want to make sure that we are clear what you all are considering with regard to this particular case.
Thank you, Mr. Zer.
So can I, can I ask a question along that line?
Absolutely. Commissioner Bowie?
Thank you. This is more for the staff, I guess. And tell me about this, this strip of, this strip. Okay, I just want to talk about that, since that's where we need to be at this point in terms of rezoning that strip to meet what's just to the north of it, so we have a larger plot to ultimately maybe get to the complex. So that strip would remain zoned for multiple, multiple family townhomes or something other than apartments, and other than single-family, but something like a community, townhomes for elderly community or something like that. Kind of, is that kind of what they, it would remain if we did not vote in favor of the rezoning there?
Correct. So whether it's current zoning, the R3A would allow, it would allow a mixture of multifamily, wouldn't allow single-family, but multifamily. It could be townhome units, it could be fourplex units with interior entrances, something of individual lots with individual, if you would, three or four unit buildings on those lots. The current zoning and the current preliminary plat were set up for that type of development.
But realistically, 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 just that little strip that remains, is that, and I'm not seeing it, but is, is that strip big enough for somebody to come in and say, I want to build three duplexes on that, five duplexes? It's, it's large enough for somebody to come in and possibly do that?
It's, it's distance, its width is similar to, to the new fourplex townhomes that were built just north of Willowood Shopping Center on Fox Ridge Drive, just, you know, half a mile to the north of this project. So it would have the depth. The proposal, you'll see it, well, the reason for the, the zoning boundary line is Cooper Drive was going to be extended, so these lots would have access off of an extension of Cooper Drive. But yeah, there is depth there for the building of fourplex multifamily buildings if the zoning remains R3A.
Okay. Thank you.
So if I may, not sure I can find it in staff findings of fact real quickly.
While you're doing that, can I ask my question?
Oh, no. I'll get back to you in a minute. I'm on, I'm on a roll for a second. So looking, looking back in the staff report on this case, top of page two, the brown-yellow drawing shows the extension of Cooper Drive, which was planned prior to tonight's case with the, the south strip, which is what's under consideration for rezoning. And at the time, you know, I don't think that strip would have really supported apartments nicely. It would have supported duplexes. We have other instances of that in Raymore. But the applicant has come before us to say, well, you know, we've got a, a different plan. We'd like to incorporate that strip into the larger tract, build a single consistent apartment complex. And, and in order to do that, one of the cases that are stacked up here this evening says, can we rezone from R3A to R3B? And I think frankly, one of the things that drives my thinking here is, from a growth management point of view, we don't really distinguish R3A, R3B on the growth management plan. We look at multifamily, determined that that area was suitable, and that was the planned intent. So frankly, I don't see a lot of, I don't see a lot of controversy of rezoning from R3A to R3B, but that's, that's my take.
Well, I mean, that, that, what you said is true, but many of the commissioners weren't on the commission in 2011 when it was originally done. So there may be some, there may, you understand what I'm saying? Since you've been on here a long time, I get that. But for somebody that may not have been on here very long, then maybe we may not have even agreed with what was found in 2011. So there's going to be some difference.
I see your point. And, and the other thing I will say from a standpoint of, of having been on the commission a long time, you know, one of the, one of the things that we've certainly learned over time is that you have to have plans, but you also have to recognize that plans change. So the plan, as it were, had a strip on the south side adjacent to the schools with duplexes. The applicant proposes a different plan. This case, as Mr. Zer so aptly reminded us, this case is, is asking, does it make sense to rezone parcel five from R3A to R3B? And I think simply because we've got multiple cases sort of stacked up back-to-back, it's, it's important for us to consider just the rezoning question for this case, for this vote. And apologies, but...
That's okay. I was just going to ask, if we didn't rezone it from R, R3A to R3B, would that put a stop to your plans?
Cassie Paven, 10340 North 84th Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I would tell you that if the rezoning did not move forward, we would take our $50 million investment and probably not invest.
Okay. And that's all I needed to know. And so, you know, from my perspective then, you know, it comes down to, do we want the project or not? If we do, we have to rezone. If we don't, then we can not rezone. So I'll go ahead and move things along and make a motion to approve case number 18018, the loss at Fox Ridge rezoning, R3A, or R3A to R3B for the Eagle Glen parcel five.
Second.
Okay, doggone it. Who was first? Commissioner Micey? Commissioner Crane? Okay, we're going to, we're going to list Commissioner Crane as the second.
That's fine.
My hearing's not as good as Commissioner Pfizer's. Okay. Motion on the floor by Commissioner Arkea, second by Commissioner Crane, to accept, accept staff proposed findings of fact, forward case 18018, loss at Fox Ridge rezoning, R3A to R3B of Eagle Glen parcel five to city council with recommendation of approval. That work? Okay, now, is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise a hand, please. Eight in favor, any opposed? And that will leave no abstentions. And so Commissioner Bowie, as is our custom, if you'd like to express your concerns with the case, this is an opportunity.
No, I don't have any, any further discussion in terms of that. I think it does boil down to kind of what either the commissioner says, and I think that, that's sort of how, how I kind of fall on that side of the fence, so.
Commissioner Armstrong?
These may be further addressed in the site plan, but in that rezoning, we are increasing congestion on an uncontrolled accessway to a school property. And so the site plan may address that successfully, but it would need to.
Let's look at that again in a minute. So case 18018, the vote was eight in favor, one opposed, no abstentions, and that will go to city council with recommendation of approval. All right. Moving ahead, case 18019, amendment to the preliminary plat for Eagle Glen subdivision, parcels five and seven. This case also requires a public hearing, and I don't, oh. Well, you answered my question. Does the applicant want to come forward and present the case again?
Cassie Paven, 10340 North 84th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68122. Happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Catterett and Mr. Grass, if you would, give us the staff report on case 18019, please.
Yes, sir, thank you. So this case before you is to recommend approval for the preliminary plat for the loss at Fox Ridge. This would actually be amendment to a current preliminary plat that's valid for parcel five and parcel seven of the Eagle Glen subdivision. Again, the subject property is located on the west side of Fox Ridge Drive, north of the Eagle Glen Elementary School. So with this application, we're talking about the entire, just under 25 acres of property. Again, parcel five, as shown on the current preliminary plat, would be that tract of land south of Cooper Drive. Cooper Drive extension is part of the current preliminary plat. Then parcel seven would be to the north of, of the Cooper Drive extension. When that preliminary plat was submitted, one of the reasons that the, the current property owner, Great Plains Development, looked to, to amend what had been proposed back in 1999 to what you currently have, is to allow for the extension of Cooper Drive. At the time, there was only, there wasn't good access out of the Fox Haven subdivision other than going up to 58 Highway. A lot of individuals wanted to have alternate accesses to get to a roadway that had traffic signal on 58 Highway. So, you know, important element at that time, and why staff agreed to allow the change of the preliminary plat to put in Cooper Drive, it wasn't initially proposed to be this way, was to allow that all... this way, was to allow that alternate access out of Foxhaven subdivision. Since this was approved in 2011, of course, we now have gone in and, as a city, we've constructed Johnston Drive from the Foxhaven subdivision, actually heading to the west to Dean Avenue, to get you to the signal at Dean Avenue. So we feel with the Foxhaven subdivision, if you don't want to try to get out onto 58 Highway off of Darby-Huntsman, you now have the Johnston Drive connection to get you out to an alternate access. So the deed for Cooper Drive is, we feel, as a city, has been greatly diminished. Again, proposing that roadway, one of the comments going back to the Good Neighbor Meeting previously where that road was established was complaints from the Eagle Glen subdivision residents to the east about the headlights, the traffic going down into Foxridge Drive. So I believe, you know, that concern did not come up at the Good Neighbor Meeting, still has not come up this evening, as far as we got to have Cooper Drive, you know, we want to have that in as a connection point. That has diminished, and certainly as staff standpoint, has diminished, again, which is why, as we look at this preliminary plat, it's one complete lot, and Cooper Drive would remain dead end as it currently is. With the preliminary plat, again, it is a requirement to have a public hearing, so that was advertised for this evening. Want to enter into the record the notices that were sent to the adjoining property owners, the notice of publication in the Journal, our Unified Development Code, the application, our growth management plan, and the staff report submitted to you this evening. As I mentioned, this preliminary plat, one lot, covers a little over 24.96 acres overall in size. The staff report does go over all the requirements for preliminary plat submittal and review by the commission. Again, as I've noted, the current plat was established in 2011, and the report also makes reference to the, what would have been the Sixth Amendment to the Eagle Glen Master Development Agreement. Again, that was in 2014 when we limited the, the density was limited, and the water quality actions required by the developer and the new applicant were established. The Good Neighbor Meeting that was held for this application was also part of the rezoning, so we held it altogether as one Good Neighbor Meeting. So the comments in your staff report for the preliminary plat are the same as we had for rezoning. The preliminary plat, the current one, does have an expiration date, currently of December 31st, 2018. So if this proposal does get approved, then that expiration date goes away, and a new clock starts ticking on this preliminary plat, and it would be valid for one year. If preliminary plat is approved, the next step would be submittal of a final plat application. I do want to note, though, if you do approve preliminary plat this evening, it would allow for site excavation work to commence. So anytime we have a valid preliminary plat, that applicant can do site grading work with the approval of city staff. I want to note, there is no complaint on the property. Again, I mentioned the extension of the drainage ditches that do go through the property. Again, the applicant, on their plan submitted, proposed no changes to those drainage channels other than the crossing where the entrance would be for the property. I mentioned previously, but the wastewater collection system does need to be extended, not only to serve this particular property, but when you have unserved property adjacent to the tract, it is a requirement that the sanitary sewer be extended to provide orderly growth and development of the system for unserved property that may be adjacent. So this particular case will extend the current sewer, which was put under Foxridge Drive when the road was constructed, they'll extend it to the north, to their northern property line as part of this development. Then when the commercial land develops, it continues to extend that line further to the north as well. Staff has submitted the proposed findings of fact for preliminary plat review for your consideration. Staff does recommend that the commission accept those proposed findings and forward this case 18019, the Lofts at Foxridge preliminary plat, to the City Council with the recommendation of approval. And again, the adequate public facilities memo that was included with your rezoning applies to the preliminary plat as well. Mr. Rocos is here, if you have any questions on that. So that would conclude staff report, sir.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Catterett. Keep in mind my earlier comments about public hearings, and at this time, I'll open the public hearing on case 18019, amendment to the preliminary plat for Eagle Glen subdivision, parcels five and seven. Would anyone from the public like to speak on this case? And seeing none, it's going to be a good night for the gavel. I'll close the public hearing, and the floor is open for questions, discussion by the commission.
Commissioner Arkea. One quick question, and then I'll be willing to make a motion if nobody else does have any questions. And this is a selfish parent question, and you may want to step up if you'd like. I know we're not going to extend Cooper the road, but I know we have a nice little dead-end road that would give access to the students if there was a path that went down along the southern side to the sidewalk we're looking at creating on the east side of the school or the west side of Foxridge Road. Is that something that the developers would be amenable to? If, say, we thought that might be a good idea as a way for students in the neighborhood to the west of Eagle Glen to be able to get to school? I bring that up because where I live, my kids have to ride their bikes to school now because they're too close to ride the bus, because they changed the bus requirements. And if there was a path at the end of our road, it would actually take them a minute to get to school as opposed to 15 to go around. And so you have a nice little byway to get through the houses to the school, but if we block that off with your backyard, you know, you may have kids going through there anyway. So I don't know if that'd be something that you guys might be amenable to, not necessarily a requirement, just a kind of an idea.
Cassie Pavin, 10340 North 84th Street, Omaha, Nebraska. It is something that we would take a look at. I was going to make a joke first about getting up and down, because I did a bunch of squats this morning at the gym, and my quads are on fire.
Oh, wow.
It's actually helping me. Yeah, I mean, it's something that we would consider. I think the bigger part in this kind of relates to the site plan a little bit, and not to get off topic, but as we started looking at the site and some of the grading, we can evaluate it. I can't make any promises here or there, mainly because we know that there's some grading there that we would have to take into consideration to make sure that we were ADA compliant with any trail that we might put in there. And I know that was part of the consideration when we were initially doing the site layout and different concepts. One of the things we had looked at, the very, very first pass that we had on this, when we started doing this, we had an insane eight-to-10-foot retaining wall along the west side, and that just isn't, I mean, this is why you're seeing the format you are. But it's certainly something we could take into consideration. I don't think we would have any issue, though, if we can't do it to meet ADA. I probably shouldn't say this, and the attorney can kick me if he wants to, or I'm sure my attorney would. But she's not here, so, you know, I mean, if someone cut through there, they cut through.
Right.
But, I mean, we could consider it, but whatever we would do there, we'd have to make sure we get the ADA requirements.
I'm sure there's liability concerns and all, because within the planned development, that's all private streets, private sidewalks.
Right.
It's probably a little different dynamic than a senior housing project with age restrictions, but still, I can kind of see that as pro-con both ways.
Yeah, we installed one, actually, on another project that we're building for a bank headquarters right now that backed up to an existing single-family neighborhood that was part of the original mixed-use development agreement. I would tell you, we had a Dickens of a time trying to get the thing, we had to zigzag it more ways, I mean, to the point where the neighborhood's like, "Well, why are we doing this?" And we're like, "Well, it's required of us by the city. It's part of the original agreement." So again, is it something we will look at? Of course, but it's just, whatever we do, we've got to make sure we're meeting requirements there. And then, again, where does that fall within the school property, and how do they get off of that said trail onto the school property?
Oh, yeah, no, I know there's multiple pieces. I just, again, just a selfish parent idea, and obviously I realize there's other things, but yeah. Perfect, thank you.
Yep, not a problem.
Good comment.
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion before anyone has a chance to.
Okay.
And I'm going to...
We can still discuss, but please go ahead.
Yes, of course, that's why I'm going to make a motion. I'm going to go ahead and move that we accept the staff-proposed findings of fact and forward case number 18019, the Lofts at Foxridge preliminary plat to the City Council with recommendation of approval.
I'll second.
Oh, gotcha this time. Okay, you were on point. Motion by Commissioner Arkea, second by Commissioner Mysky, to accept staff-proposed findings of fact on case 18019, Lofts at Foxridge preliminary plat, and forward to City Council with recommendation of approval. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise a hand please. Seven, eight opposed, and no abstentions, so the vote is eight in favor, one opposed. Commissioner Bowie, no abstentions. And I'll give you an opportunity, and I see you shaking your head no, so, okay. All right.
So, Mr. Zer, you said that we have to have the final plat later, so would it be necessary for me to make a motion to table that?
That would be an appropriate motion to make at this...
That would be wonderful.
Table or continue?
Continue is better.
We're going to seek to continue it to the next available Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Do we have that currently? So it would be a continuance to the October 16th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting or any further meeting beyond that?
All right, well, then I'm going to go ahead and make another motion while I'm at it, that we continue case number 18020, the Lofts at Foxridge final plat, to the October 16th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Second.
You jumped on that one.
He pointed at me.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Arkea, second by Commissioner Crane, to continue case 18020, Lofts at Foxridge final plat, to our October 16th or later meeting. That sound right?
That's, yeah, that's fine.
Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor, raise a hand please. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, there's nine. Y'all are making me run out of fingers. Nine in favor, none opposed, no abstentions. Yeah, that doesn't need any further comment. All right, and our last case under new business this evening, case 18021, Lofts at Foxridge site plan. And give me a second to try to get a little bit organized here. Apologies. And hi. You're very good at anticipating. So case 18021, Lofts at Foxridge site plan.
Cassie Pavin, 10340 North 84th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68122. Happy to answer any other questions you might have.
All right. Case does not require a public hearing. Before we go to staff report, I trust that the blueprint package was particularly relevant to site plan?
That is correct.
Yeah, great. Okay, thank you. I'm armed and dangerous, as is Mr. Zer. Okay, staff, if you would, let's hear the staff report on case 18021.
But before you guys go, I would look at your recommendations, because I'm a cheater and I read ahead, and it does state that you wanted us to approve case number 18020 before we approve this, is that correct?
Contingent.
Correct. And that would have to be modified to reflect the continuance of our previous case to the next meeting, and so that would be corrected in the staff report and brought forward to you at the next meeting to reflect those changes.
So, Mr. Zer, I know you're paying attention here. Can we hear the case and make a recommendation contingent upon...
And should we? I guess is where I was going to go, is should we hear it if we can't move on tonight?
Any motion is going to be contingent upon approval of the final site plan once that has the opportunity to come back before you all.
So then we could technically approve this contingent upon approving...
The final site plan.
The final site plan.
Comes back on the 16th.
And then we wouldn't have to reapprove this if we approved it contingent on that and approved that.
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understand.
Make sure we're legal.
Shouldn't we hear them both at the same time, though? You don't think?
Yeah, we're there.
Mr. Grass?
Thank you, sir. I'll jump in and give Mr. Catterett a break here. He's been pulling his weight for this meeting, so I definitely appreciate that. Given the discussion thus far, the next application on the agenda for this evening is the site plan consideration for the Lofts of Foxridge, which we've had a great discussion about throughout this entire evening. I definitely appreciate the questions that the commission has had from staff and both of the applicant as well, so definitely appreciate that. We've talked a lot already about the location of the site, so we should be very familiar with that, located on the west side of Foxridge Drive, just north of the Eagle Glen Elementary School. And again, we've included a couple of site photographs just to familiarize yourselves with what the site currently looks like and kind of picture just based on the site plan, hopefully what it will look like here in the next several months pending the approval from the commission this evening. The existing zoning of the property, as we've covered, is a mixture of both R-3A, multiple-family residential district, and R-3B apartment community residential district. And as of course, as we just heard, the applicant is also proposing to rezone that to make it one cohesive development, to be able to utilize the entire site for their development. So I've included a zoning map of what the current zoning is. Currently, the property is surrounded by the regional commercial C3 zoning to the north, R1P, single-family residential, to the south and east, R1, single-family, and R3A, multiple-family residential, to the west of the property. So there's a mixture of zoning classifications throughout this entire site. And then the existing surrounding uses, to the north, of course, undeveloped property, which the city is currently pursuing, some options there. To the south, you have the Eagle Glen Elementary School. To the east, you have the Eagle Glen subdivision, single-family residential. And then, of course, to the west with the Foxhaven subdivision and the Ridgeway Villas, a mixture of single-family and multiple-family residential units. The site overall is just under 25 acres, and is, of course, existing on the Eagle Glen parcels five and seven of the existing preliminary plat that is currently valid. And as we've talked about before, the growth management plan, the future land use map, does identify this area as appropriate for medium and high-density development, which would fall under the proposed category of what we're talking about this evening. And then again, the major thoroughfare plan map classifies Foxridge Drive as a major collector. As we talked about previously with the concerns of traffic, that roadway was designed with this exact type of development in mind, and is designed to handle any traffic that would be generated by this or the commercial traffic to the north, so important to keep in mind. Because it doesn't require a public hearing, this application did not require an advertisement in the newspaper, so it was not advertised this evening. And then again, the applicant is seeking to obtain site plan approval for a roughly 396, 400-unit luxury apartment, multiple-family community. Staff has included the requirements and standards for the site plan approval process for your consideration. And just to touch on a couple of the other previous actions, which we've already talked about a little bit, just kind of how I got to the zoning here. The existing zoning that we currently are settled with today was established in 2011, which of course reflects some changes that were made from its original conception in 1999, when the overall master plan for Eagle Glen was originally approved. Again, we've kind of gotten into detail of that, so I'll kind of skip over that section. The engineering division has reviewed this application as well, and has attached the memorandum that you all have in the beginning of your packet is relevant to this application as well, and kind of goes into some of the details that we'll talk about with stormwater, public facilities, and things of that nature as it relates to the site plan. As we've talked about, they have also submitted an application for preliminary plat, final plat, and rezoning. This approval of the site plan is contingent on the approval of the final plat request and the rezoning request. And so you'll see those later in our recommendation, those are conditions for the approval, is that those other applications are also required to be approved as well as this application tonight. The development standards for both the existing R-3A and R-3B, and then the proposed R-3B zoning classification are the same. And as I mentioned, the applicant is proposing roughly 400 units in this, which equates to about 15.8 units per acre as far as density is concerned, which, as we've talked about before, is a... as we've talked about before is a reduction from what would have previously been allowed under previous development concepts from where we are today. There are some use-specific standards or conditions that would apply to this project as it relates to the spacing between buildings, the overall building design, and then the overall common open space that's provided for the tenants. So there are some standards that the applicant was required to follow, and based on the review of the site plan, it does comply with all of the applicable standards that are in place for this exact type of development. Parking for the proposed development, for a multiple-family dwelling classification or three or more units in a building, the parking ratio is about 1.5 spaces per dwelling unit, and it would equate to about 600 spaces total for this proposed development. The applicant has provided, I believe it was 608, and within that, 13 of those are required to be handicap accessible, and they have included at least one of those in front of each of the buildings that they've proposed. And there are some additional parking spaces in the garage, which also have some handicap-accessible spaces as well. So parking, adequate parking has been provided for the site based on staff's review. As far as landscaping, per our code, 30% of the project area is required to be landscaped, and as you can see based on the site plan, this is a very, very large site with a heavy emphasis on the landscaping aspect of the site plan proposed. The applicant has landscaped 68% of the site with a mixture of existing trees, existing landscaping, as well as landscaping that they're proposing to add to meet those requirements. Street trees will be required along Foxridge Drive, as well as interior parking lot landscaping to kind of break up the parking lot and add some aesthetics to the interior of the building as well, and all of those standards have been met. As we talked about previously, a type A screen is required along the western property line next to the Foxhaven subdivision, as well as the south, butting the elementary school. And as the applicant indicated, they're currently pursuing a combination of a berm, as well as planting strip of different types of vegetation, whether it be trees or shrubs or what have you. But based on the submitted landscape plan, which is included in your packet, the landscape plan does comply with all of these standards as they pertain to the Unified Development Code. The overall building design, which you can see also in your packet with some proposed renderings, does meet the intent and the standards for building design in the Unified Development Code. Based on the applicant, there will be a mixture of cement board siding, stone, metal, a very good mixture of different types of materials that will sort of blend into the neighborhood existing, but also kind of set their project aside as something new that the community doesn't already have. So the proposed elevations and materials do meet the spirit and intent of the Unified Development Code. Pedestrian access, we kind of talked about the requirement for a sidewalk along Foxridge Drive, at least on the west side of that street, and that will be required. And then to add to that, pedestrian access into the site has also been provided via sidewalk connection along that main drive, which then connects to more private interior sidewalk network that will connect the individuals to each of the apartment buildings, the clubhouse, some of the amenities that are scattered throughout the site. So pedestrian access is very well thought out and meets the spirit of the code. And additionally, and I'll kind of touch on this in another section, but she kind of mentioned the future connection of Ridgway Drive once that is constructed, pedestrian access will be required there as well, which will feed people from Ridgway Drive South into this proposed development. So once that connection is provided, it will be required to add that pedestrian connection. Signers plan was submitted with the application. As it stands right now, the applicant is proposing to add a monument sign along Foxridge Drive close to the entrance, and based on that's location, the landscaping, they have provided adequate landscaping for that sign, and so the location and specifications of that do meet the intent and spirit of the code. And of course, a permit will be required for those, and they'll be referred in more detail once they get to that point. The fire district did review this application, had a number of comments that have been well addressed by the applicant. The main one to think about here is the access drive, with only one access point into the site and out of the site, at least until that Ridgway Drive entrance is connected, it's really important to have at least two access points in and out of the site in case of a fire or emergency or whatever the case may be. And so because of that, the fire district has requested that a temporary access be constructed off of the existing Ridgway Drive, which you find in the Ridgway Villas, over to that future connection point with a gated access, so it can only be utilized by the folks at South Metro or our police department here in City Hall. It won't be intended to be used by residents, and that is really the intention behind that gate, to restrict that use only to emergency personnel. So that was the main concern from the fire district. Of course, they also require the issuance of a building permit as well, so they'll have a chance to review the building plans more specifically once we get to that point. As far as stormwater, it will be collected on-site, as we've talked about before, and discharged into the detention basin, which is located on the southeast corner of the site. There'll be a number of stormwater and BNP's that will be required on the site, and will all be taken care of through an overall maintenance agreement, which is fairly standard for all commercial and residential developments of this size. So the, and of course, the public works department can speak to that if you have any specific questions on how it will be treated, they can certainly get into that. And then as we've talked about before, the stormwater improvements that are required off-site on the east side of Foxridge, which is actually in tract E of the Eagle Glen Third Plat, which was approved many years ago, those improvements will really be designed to slow the flow of water, maybe some rock check dams and some minor improvements to address some erosion issues that we currently have there today. And as I mentioned, the applicant is fully on board with providing those improvements. The site lighting plan was submitted with the site plan package, and the location, the type of lighting, and the overall illumination of the site itself does comply with the UDC requirements. There is no spillover to any adjacent properties, including the school, or the single-family subdivisions that exist around the site, so that does meet the requirements of the UDC. Being that it is a very large-scale apartment community, the applicant has proposed multiple trash enclosures as part of their facility versus one singular centralized location, and being that they will be required to screen each of those dumpster corrals, and they did include in their site plan package a rendering of what those would look like. They'll be designed to match the materials of the buildings themselves, the combination of brick, cement board siding, wood, what have you, but they will be designed to match the facades of the building, if you will. As it stands now with the flat roofs, the mechanical equipment, you know, HVAC, those type of equipment, will be located on the roofs, they will require minimal screening. However, if anything changes that does require any sort of utility boxes or mechanical equipment to be located at the ground level, should they exceed a certain height that is specified in our code, they will be required to be screened, and staff will certainly monitor those as building permits and construction plans are submitted, to see if there are any necessary modifications to the landscape plan. And then as far as site access, as I talked about before, the main access on the site will be Foxridge Drive for the majority of the time that the site is being built. It won't be until the commercial property to the north begins to develop that they will be required to complete the construction of Ridgway Drive from its current terminus on the west side of this property, all the way over to Foxridge Drive. And then as I mentioned, at that point, the applicant has requested to connect to that future connection of Ridgway and add a second access point, which will hopefully alleviate some of the traffic going onto 58 and get them to another signalized intersection up to 58 Highway. Staff did submit proposed findings of fact for your consideration. Then moving on to our recommendation, overall, we do, staff does recommend approval of the case, the lofts at Foxridge site plan, subject to the following 18 conditions. And as we kind of touched on before, these will have to be tweaked minorly to reflect our changes this evening of the final plat and changing the phasing of that. But overall, staff does recommend the approval of this case, subject to the 18 conditions as presented. If you have any questions of myself or Mr. Catterett, we'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, the applicant probably answer them in greater detail. That concludes staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Grass. Case does not require a public hearing. Floor is open for questions, discussion by the commission. And I think I might start. Mr. Zer, if you would, I need some help interpreting requirements versus how the proposed design meets the requirements. So the concern I have on bottom of page 12 in our staff report, the paragraph, this is 440.010C, building materials under building design standards, item 3A, metal walls, and I think this is a, I think this is an accurate quote, appears to be an accurate quote, from Unified Development Code. And so the statement made there in code is the use of metal siding is permitted only in industrial districts. And it goes on, but I, I'll stop at that. In the large plans, and thank you very much, these are very enlightening and very detailed, not light, but enlightening. So I'm actually in the electronic packet, page 75, which, if I can navigate to the bottom, I think that's gonna be sheet A200 in the, in the package, and this is where my concern starts. The material board shows MP-1, metal panel siding, MP-2, metal panel siding, different color, and then that's located on the sides of the building in the areas with the decks. So, Mr. Zer.
Yeah, I think I can direct you away from 3A and focus your attention on 3D, which applies for, it would not put that restriction on there. Architectural metal panels may be an acceptable substitute for masonry on that one, so I would identify that as an acceptable substitute option for you. It's not going to be there as sole siding for side and rear facades, it's going to be an architectural feature that is going to be identified with it, and more appropriately lumped into 3D rather than 3A.
Good. So just, just to clarify, so 3A talks about metal siding only permitted in industrial districts, but because 3A and 3D are equal weight, 3D is applicable in this case, not an industrial district, obviously.
Staff was in discussion for a second there.
No, that's fine, understand. But your position stands. 3D, this is legal.
I, in my conversation with Mr. Catterett just now, I would identify that, yes, this is, I would view these as architectural and substitutes for masonry. I believe that Mr. Grass and Mr. Catterett will have additional input regarding the applicability of these sections to the multifamily provisions that are before you this evening, and I'll invite them to each comment on it.
Well, I actually, to be candid, I found myself, you know, I know older buildings in Raymore with the corrugated metal siding. I know what the objective of code was, and I know that we've made considerable improvements in the appearance down 58 Highway. I certainly don't want to take a step backward, but the plans and the architectural work here obviously makes sense. I really just wanted to make sure that we didn't have a contradiction with code.
And again, I'd have Mr. Grass comment on that as well.
Right, I don't want to forward that to city council. Well, this one doesn't go anyway, this is ours. So that's reassuring. Okay, Mr. Grass, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Very good question, and as I look closer to the code, as Mr. Catterett was sharing, and unfortunately, not really specified in the staff report itself, but if you look at section 440 of the UDC, the design standards are really only applicable to commercial and industrial projects, they're not subject to residential projects such as this one.
Ah, okay. That's another good interpretation.
Can I ask a question?
I trust you, but I gotta read for myself.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Since I, since I held the floor for a minute with Commissioner Arkea, I have to be fair about this, so give me just a second. It's a residential use, I like that. Mr. Zer, I think you've got some competition there.
Oh, I'm willing to accept that.
Thank you, Mr. Grass. Okay, I feel, I feel so much better now. Commissioner Bowie, please.
A couple of things. Tell me about, a little bit about the safety issues and conversations that may have taken place with this being so close to a school. I mean, I don't see it really addressed in our packages too much, but is there, has there been some concerns, and maybe the former police chief can respond to this, but has it, is it, where are we at in terms of that issue? Did it come up with the neighbors, with the people that live in the area having a, because rarely do you see an apartment complex so close to a school. I mean, I just, I haven't seen it a whole lot, but maybe it's out there, but tell me about the conversation behind that.
Absolutely, absolutely. Great question. So we have been in contact and conversations with the school district throughout the entirety of this process, and they were actually represented at the Goodne meeting themselves. And to be honest, that question just really hasn't popped up at this point. With regards to safety, really the only question that had come up was the requirement for the sidewalk to get students to and from the school safely, not having to cross Foxridge. But the overall concern of safety of, you know, residents in the apartment complex versus kids at the school, that dialogue and that conversation really hasn't, hasn't come up to this point.
Okay. Okay. And I'd be happy to comment on that. If you'll look at New Longview, it is directly north of the Longview School District's elementary school that sits over there in the same general vicinity, plus it's right next to the college campus. I talked to the police chief there in Lee Summit, and he's indicated to me it has created no additional issues for them in that area. It's a very wholesome living environment, and they haven't had any problems in that area. It's been a very quiet, very genial living environment with the different types of living opportunities for folks in that area, from single-family to even close-quarter, single-family homes, to the New Longview residences there, who are kind of rated at the same luxury level as what we're intending for this particular project.
Okay, thank you. The other thing about that was, I did read something about traffic lights. Is that planned, a planned part of this development at all, putting additional traffic lights there on Foxridge?
A traffic light will not be required as part of this. As I mentioned, the roadway was designed contemplating this exact site, same type of development. That being said, the commercial land to the north may warrant some sort of traffic control eventually in the future. I can't say for sure whether that'll be a traffic light or a stop sign at this point. Those findings will come out when that property owner or developer is required to do the traffic study as part of their process. But I can say with regard to this project, no additional traffic control, other than maybe a stop sign coming out of the property onto Foxridge will be required.
What about Ridgway? Is there a timeframe on maybe further developing that beyond just being a place for emergency vehicles?
When the property to the north, the commercial property develops, they will be the ones that are responsible for constructing that road permanently from the current terminus at Ridgway all the way over to Foxridge Drive. And again, at that point, I believe the only traffic control plan would be a stop sign off of the future Ridgway onto Foxridge, and then vice versa, coming to Ridgway perhaps up to 58, which I believe currently exists today.
Are there plans to maybe put in another entry, entrance sign in that? If that ever becomes, would that be something that would, that wouldn't be a part of this plan? Putting in any other entry sign besides the one that's gonna be on Foxridge?
Into the facility you're talking about.
Coming into the facility.
Certainly there would be the access, and I'll let the applicant address whether they have plans to add any other sort of signage along Ridgway Drive.
Cassie Pabon, 10340 North 84th Street, Omaha, Nebraska. No, it would be our intention to just have the one main entrance sign. Part of that rationale is because if we have someone that is coming into the project that isn't living there, we want their first stop to be right at that clubhouse. We don't want them venturing into the rest of, or having to meander through, we want them right there at that clubhouse.
Thanks.
Any proposed signs gonna have to get permanent?
Commissioner Armstrong.
Just in follow-up to Commissioner Bowie's question about safety, because our security in schools is a changing and evolving issue, has that question been expressly asked of the school district, or is it appropriate that it is? Because it may not have been something that they considered.
Staff?
Which question are you asking? I'm sorry, I didn't.
If that large unsecured border between a higher-level congested apartment area is a concern of safety for them, either in securing their facility or traffic back and forth?
Sure. I don't believe that question specifically has been asked. Certainly they're aware of the proximity of the proposed buildings to their, both the building and the playground, but one thing to keep in mind is that regardless of whether this develops as a wholesome apartment community, or whether it were developed under the existing zoning that we have today as a mixture of maybe duplexes, townhomes, in addition to the single-family properties about the property, there really is no requirement for any type of impenetrable screening along that property line. Certainly with the existing zoning as today, that type A screen is still required, and it will be required with the apartment development should it go through, but there are no requirements in our code that require a fence or some sort of impenetrable screening.
I think you missed the point. The point I think she was trying to get across is should there be a discussion between staff and the school district on the security of the, you know, kids moving?
Okay, so.
I mean, even though there wasn't any issues now, but maybe a discussion needs to happen.
So the question is from Commissioner Myski, the- The question's posed to staff. Mr. Zer, Mr. Catterett.
Can I, can I, can I say something real quick? The, the back, the back of the school, where Eagle Glen is going to butt up against these apartments, that's the playground area. Okay, so you got the playground area, and that, that might add to some of the potential concerns when kids are on the playground. Just something to think about.
So if I can add another question to this, am I correct in assuming that the school district received legal notice of the case?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, and if I can just add on to Mr. Gress's comments as well. At the Good Neighbor Meeting, the superintendent of the school district, Dr. Monsis, was there. I specifically had a conversation with him, where we specifically were looking at, at the site plan. We were talking about the common property line between the proposed apartments and the school district. I specifically went over the, what the current plan had shown for the berm, and then on the, what would be on the north side of the berm is a drainage swale, again, to try to get that water going down into the detention bases. So we have the berm with the landscaping on top of the berm. Did I specifically ask that question? No, but again, he's, he's fully aware of Eagle Glen School, he's fully aware of the playground being there. He knew there wasn't any direct connections, sidewalk, et cetera. I, again, I did not say a fence was going in. What I told him was a berm with landscaping. So I just have to conclude from that, that he was, he was fully aware of what the proposal is, and he expressed, at least to me at that time, no concern of the ability to, for children, if you would, to penetrate through there, you know, cross through there, cut through there, whatever it might be. He seems satisfied with what the proposal was, given the site plan that had been submitted.
Yeah. Mr. Zer, would you care to add to that?
I guess from my perspective, I've only heard a reference with regard to safety, a kind of a mysterious, what, what issues are we concerned with with regard to safety over here? You've got all kinds of additional public safety statutes and ordinances adopted by the city in order to provide safety within the school, within the school district, and within the community at large. All of those would still come into play. I mean, if, if it's a question of whether or not it has to be a registered felon or a registered individual, those are statutory provisions that are all going to prohibit an individual from living within that particular community without at least having registration or otherwise. So I guess I'm just kind of questioning what we're concerned with with regard to the safety.
Those are actually state statutes.
Yes, exactly correct. So I questioned what the, what the issue of safety would be identified as.
Commissioner Armstrong.
Just to clarify, I'm simply asking for the school district's input onto what they see as their issues of safety, and to assure that, that this site plan meets that their known concerns at this point. Because our, our issues of school safeties are evolving and changing, and our statutes may not accommodate what they currently see as safe for the schoolchildren.
Right. I think I'm, I miss the good old days when all we had to worry about was if there were enough teachers and classroom space. Life was a little simpler. Further questions, comments? Commissioner Armstrong.
So would it be appropriate to make a motion to get their input before this goes to city council?
No. I think, I think what he told us tells us that they've already gave their input, because if Dr. Monsis didn't bring anything up, then, I mean, he's a pretty sharp guy. I've met him. If he had any concerns, I think he would have brought them up.
Right. I, I feel like we've met our obligation, and, and I certainly am not opposed to going beyond, but I, I feel like, you know, we provided legal notice to the school district, and as Mr. Catterett added, superintendent was there. Mr. Catterett?
Yeah, and I apologize. One more bit of information. I specifically, we specifically shared the site plan application not only with the school superintendent, but with the director of facilities. So the specific, Dr. Peddingill and, and their, their facilities managers have seen the site plan, which include the landscaping and everything about that. So they're fully aware of what's being asked, and again, I, with the multiple notices to them, if they had an issue, I, I believe they would have told us they had an issue with that.
So I think, Mr. Zer, Commissioner Armstrong, I, I think if you so choose, you could, well, we don't actually have a motion on the floor yet. You could certainly either make a motion to include a clause like that, or make a motion to amend a motion to approve the case, but that's up to you.
Well, with, with the further information that you've sought their input, I will hold.
Thank you. Commissioner Orkia.
I will go ahead and make a motion to approve the staff-proposed findings of fact and approve case number 18021, the lofts at Fox Ridge site plan, subject to the conditions outlined, but more specifically contingent upon number three, which requires the approval of the, city council's approval of the final plat, case number 18020, but then along with all the other conditions as outlined.
Commissioner Myski? So we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Orkia to accept staff-proposed findings of fact and approve case 18021, lofts at Fox Ridge site plan, subject to the 18 conditions noted in staff report. And if you don't mind, I won't read all of those 18 with particular emphasis on condition three, which states city council must approve case 18020, lofts at Fox Ridge final plat. So that's the contingency that we discussed earlier. And second by Commissioner Myski, if I didn't say that already. Sound legal, Mr. Zer? Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, raise a hand, please. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eight in favor, opposed, Commissioner Bowie. And that leaves no one to abstain. So site plan is actually approved, contingent on our approval of the final plat and city council approval of the three prior. Thank you. Appreciate that. Mr. Zer, do you have a city council report for us this evening?
Thank you, Chairman. I'd be happy to provide that this evening. Your last meeting occurred on September 4th, 2018. Since that timeframe, there have been two city council meetings, which I will be able to report from. One which occurred on September 10th, and the other which occurred on September 24th. Going somewhat backwards on this, there is nothing that I can identify that would be reported from the September 24th city council meeting. There was a liquor license for the El Dorado Mexican restaurant, which has a new owner of it, but as it relates to development within the city, I have not been able to identify anything within it that I think would be worthy of notation for this evening. With regard to the September 10th, 2018 city council meeting, the item that I would identify for relevance with regard to the planning and zoning commission this evening was the first item on unfinished business. It has received a second reading and final approval, and that was the 28th amendment to the Unified Development Code, previously approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission on July 17th by unanimous vote, and initially read and approved for a first reading by the city council on August 27th, 2018. The 28th amendment has now officially been approved, and our UDCs will be appropriately upgraded accordingly by, by Mr. Catterett. That is all I have to report from the city council report.
Mr. Mayor, anything to add to that? Thank you. As always, we'll move on to staff report. Mr. Catterett, Mr. Gress, if you'd like to start.
I will start, sir. Thank you. Looking at our calendar, our next meeting will be on Tuesday, October 16th. Of course, we now have the, we would have consideration of the final plat for the lofts at Fox Ridge. Other item on the agenda would be the third final plat of the Timber Trail subdivision. This is the Hunt Midwest subdivision there at, at Lucy Webb and Dean Avenue. The third plat there would be a continuation of, of the, the first and second phase on the, what would be on the east side of Dean Avenue. So it would actually, you know, extend the roadways to get up to, including the trail up to Johnston Drive, so that'll basically close off that area of the Timber Trail subdivision. We'll also have two applications regarding the Raymore industrial development. This is the proposed industrial development by the Van Trust Group down at the North Cast Parkway and proposed extension of Dean Avenue. They're looking at a, a reclassification of zoning from its current business park to planned unit development for an industrial project. And then they're also looking, as part of that would be their preliminary development plan, and then they also have a submittal at that meeting for the site plan for the development of the entire, about 126 acres of the project. So we'll have a busy meeting on the 16th. And looking beyond that into November, I do want to make note for the commission, November 5th, Monday evening, is the annual scheduled joint work session between city council and the planning commission. There will be a presentation that evening regarding a proposed development, very high level discussion, but that we'll be looking at presenting. And then, of course, any topics that the planning commission or city council may want to have in that joint work session. We try to do that on an annual basis, and we've set aside, if you would, the first Monday in November of each year now to be the joint work session. So encourage you all, we'll remind everybody of that, but that would be the November 5th day.
I was going to say, I don't, I don't suppose there'll be an actual packet delivered for that joint work session.
If there is a packet of information, I'll make sure the commission gets that information as well. I, I don't know that there will be specific to what our topics will be.
We'll get a reminder at our next regular meeting and.
Email reminders are always good. I mean, the package is always help, too. So if there's not a package, a nice email reminder or something's always great, too.
I will do that. And unfortunately, the, the next evening is a regular planning commission meeting, and we do have topics for that agenda. We have a conditional use permit request for a sign, and we possibly will have the UDC amendment regarding sidewalks that you've had discussion on.
Sure.
That we want to read back for a formal vote.
And we'll make fun of anyone who's forgotten to come to the joint work session. Sorry, my bad.
I will try to remind you several times on the work sessions, so.
Appreciate that.
That would conclude staff comments, community development staff comments as part of staff report. I'll turn it over to Mr. Rokus.
Mr. Rokus.
Well, most of you, driven around town, most of our summer work has been completed as far as doing curbs and sidewalks as you've driven around town, including doing our overlays and our micro-surfacing has been pretty well wrapped up for the year. The major project that we're working on right now, if you haven't been up Johnston Drive and looked at Hawkeridge Park, spent a lot of time up there trying to move that project along and build a lot of nice features around the lake. And so we'll continue to work on that project for the Parks Department for the rest of the fall. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Good. Any questions for Mr. Rokus? All right. Thanks for getting county line open again.
Yeah, no bridge questions.
Yep, no. That was kind of a regular, wasn't it? I'll open the floor for public comment, and seeing none, I'll open the floor for commission member comment, and I'll tell you, how about, may I start with you, Commissioner Wiggins?
Thank you, staff, for all the work that you've put into tonight. I know that we kind of got a little sidetracked, and Mr. Zer, thank you for bringing us back in line with the, the appropriate cases, but thank you for entertaining all of our questions. I know there's a lot of information that everybody was looking for, and thank everybody for all the hard work and, yeah, dealing with our out-of-schedule approach.
Thank you. Vice Chair Pfizer.
Yeah, I attended the community conversation last night, and it was actually really, it was a lot of fun, and it was, it was pretty informative. And I think that we're really lucky that we do have a, a council and mayor and, and city staff who, who listens to the people, and I think that we had a really good turnout, I thought, too. So I thought that, you know, there was a little spirited talk there at the end, but for the most part, it was really, you know, helpful, and it's just nice to interact with other people, too. So I just appreciate the fact that things like that do happen in this, this town.
Thank you. Commissioner Armstrong.
Thank you all for your time and attention.
Commissioner Crane, Secretary Crane.
No comment.
Commissioner Myski?
The only comment I have, Mr. Zer, is she started it. She, she started that whole thing, so.
Don't point fingers unless, never mind, glass houses. Commissioner Orkia, thank you so much for being the, the workhorse on making motions this evening.
My pleasure, and while she may have started it, thank you so much for being here tonight and answering our questions and being available to help us understand the vision of what you all are trying to accomplish, and for your willingness to invest in the Raymore community. We look forward to seeing more and, and watching this transpire. So thank you for your time. And again, city staff, and I know Mayor you as well, and the council probably had a few meetings with them as well, and appreciate your all's time and effort in, in helping our city not only grow, but do so in a strategic fashion that I think will benefit the community as a whole as we move forward. So thank you so much for y'all, for your all's time and effort in that regard.
Thank you, Commissioner Orkia. Commissioner Bowie?
Again, ditto what everybody else said. Appreciate you guys. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Mayor Turnbow.
Yeah, you know, my silence tonight, previously on the project, is not indicative of my disinterest in the project, because Mr. Tapp and I and, and Mr. Catterett have worked very hard and thought very hard about what we can bring to our community to provide a variety of housing opportunities for folks. This project is probably one of the most premier projects that have come before us in the past two and a half years, and we were excited that they were interested in investing in our community, and it gives us another level of, as I said, a variety of housing to take effect, just like Cassie was saying, to, to allow us, Honeywell is growing, Cerner is growing, those types of companies that, we've got Van Trust as looking to invest in our community that will bring eight to 900 jobs to our community. There, there are a lot of opportunities for people to move into this community and work from, in, and, and close to this community. So we're, we're really excited, and we've met a lot on this particular topic, and I really appreciate the input that you all provided tonight with your questions, because those are things, sometimes things that Matt and I and Jim don't think about as we're progressing into this. And so I was really very taken by the great questions that came up tonight. Thank you very much for your input on that, and I think this is going to be a great, a great project for our community. I'm excited about this and what it, the other interests that it will draw to the other areas of our community. So thank you very much, Cassie, for a great presentation tonight to the group, and your ability to answer tough questions and staying with us tonight. So thank you very much, and thanks to the team.
Yep, thank you, Mayor Turnbow, and I'll try not to repeat too much of what other commissioners have said, but thank you very much to staff, Mr. Zer. You know, I always like to work you as hard as possible, Mr. Rokus. Thanks for your support, and of course, Mr. Catterett, Mr. Gress. We could not do this without your work. The staff reports, the research, the background that goes into this frankly are, are essential to the job we do. And please remind me not to jinx another meeting by saying, oh, this will be a short one, probably be out by eight o'clock. Oops, I should know better, shouldn't I? But anyway, I think it was time well spent, as Mayor Turnbow said, and it was very good discussion. Unless any of the commissioners have anything else to add, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
To, you know, keep my streak going this evening, I will move that we adjourn this evening.
Second.
Oh, I heard Commissioner Bowie on the second, so you beat them to them. Motion by Commissioner Orkia, second by Commissioner Bowie. Okay, let's see. I, guys, I better see nine. Okay, nine in favor, none opposed, no abstentions. Thank you.